It should work.
I'll see if she's in the back.
Yeah.
She's not, I can call her.
Okay.
Yeah, he's waiting to absorb. I'll see if she's in. He's very brilliant at that one.
I don't see her.
Yeah, you ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna call the city council meeting of November the nineteenth to order. Kit, would you call the robe, please?
Yes, Mayor. Long?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Marsh?
Here.
Kenyon? Petty?
Here.
Tennant?
Here.
Schottmeyer?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here. Would you join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay. The first order of business we have tonight is the consent agenda. And number one on the consent agenda is the approval of the November fifth, two thousand thirteen, city council meeting minutes. Number two, watershed conservation resources center task order number five. Resolution approving task order number five with the watershed conservation resources center for the city to pay a hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars to restore White River Stream Bank near the Nolan wastewater treatment facility. Number three, two thousand thirteen bulletproof vest partnership program. Resolution authorizing acceptance of a fifty percent matching grant award from the two thousand thirteen bulletproof vest partnership program. An amount of four thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars for the replacement of body armor vests for the federal police officers and approving budget adjustment. Number four, federal and state law enforcement forfeitures. Resolution approving a budget adjustment in the total amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars recognizing federal and state law enforcement forfeiture revenue received through October two thousand and thirteen and increasing the related expense budget. Number five, Washington County jail services interlocal agreement. A resolution approving an amendment to the jail services interlocal agreement of Washington County, Arkansas, continuing fees at sixty dollars per booked prisoner for calendar year two thousand and fourteen. Number six, police department policies. Resolution approving federal police department policies. One point two, point four, domestic violence thirty-three point one. Training forty-one point two, point eight. Vehicular pursuit forty-one point two, point eleven. Use of department vehicles sixty-one point one. Traffic enforcement and sixty-one point three, traffic direction and control. Number seven, animal services donation revenue. Resolution approving a budget adjustment. An amount of one thousand nine hundred dollars recognizing revenue from the friends of the federal animal shelter for stainless steel countertops and other improvements to the animal shelter clinic area, play yard, and dog park. Number eight, Community Access Television Incorporated, DBA Your Media Contract. Resolution approving the annual extension of the contract with Community Access Television Incorporated, DBA Your Media. Any amount of a hundred and five thousand dollars for the provision of public access television services and the operation of public access television channel through two thousand and fourteen. Number nine, Grant Thornton LLP, a resolution approving a contract with Grant Thornton LLP and the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars to provide independent odd services to the city of Fayetteville. Number ten, aviation gasoline. A resolution approving a budget adjustment in the total amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars to increase the airport budget for aviation gasoline. Number eleven, two thousand thirteen cops hiring program. A resolution authorizing acceptance of a two thousand thirteen cops hiring program matching grant in the total amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars to fund three police officers for a period of four years with the matching requirement split proportionately between the city and the federal school district and approving budget adjustment. Number twelve, Woolsey Wet Prairie Wetland Bank. A resolution to reaffirm the city council's support for the expansion of the Woolsey Wet Prairie to create a wetland bank for the city and possibly other agencies if allowed by the Corps of Engineers. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda as read. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right. We have nothing under unfinished business. Undersea public hearing, I'm gonna open up this time to a public hearing and it is Van Ash Drive Construction Project condemnation possession a resolution authorizing the city attorney to seek condemnation possession of certain lands owned by Dale and Martha Benedict and David Clark McClinton needed for the Van Ash Drive Construction Project. I will open it up for public comment now. Is anyone from the public would like to address us on this?
And the city engineer might need to explain this a little bit for the public speak season so they understand what this is about.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is for the Van Ash Extension Project, which is extending Van Ash West from Greg Avenue over to Garland, improving the existing portion of Van Ash that goes under I-540 and extends to Garland. We've acquired all of the necessary rights of way except these two properties. The Benedict property is actually along Highway one-twelve, just west of Highway one-twelve, and the McClinton property is just east of McGuire. It's on the new location section of Van Ash. So these are the remaining two properties that need to be acquired. We were not able to negotiate an agreement with them and so we're requesting authorization so that the city attorney can proceed with the condemnation process. The project is out for bids right now and we will be opening bids next Wednesday and so we do need to proceed with the project so that we can begin construction early next year. And I'll answer any questions.
What questions we have, Chris, on this? Okay, what public comment do we have on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank the city engineers and the property specialists for the city who have claimed almost all of the easements needed and right-of-way needed for this. Many of the individuals actually did donate to the city because this is gonna be a major boon to that undeveloped portion of the city. And we will continue to try to negotiate with these two landowners. As you know, we've not actually had to go to a jury verdict to obtain any property yet but there's always a chance that we will not be able to negotiate and we must also protect the taxpayer's interest and not pay more than it's worth. So we will continue to try to negotiate this but we appreciate the city council giving us the authority to begin condemnation procedures because once we do that then we're able to obtain possession of the land so the construction can continue.
Does the council have any questions for the city attorney? Okay.
Will we pass the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. Under new business, number one, we have the two thousand and fourteen annual budget and work program. Resolution adopting the two thousand and fourteen annual budget and work program. Paul?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is the annual budget for two thousand and fourteen. I call this the operating budget because many of the capital items aren't included yet. That will depend on the close of two thousand and thirteen where we'll roll that money forward to continue the capital, most of the capital projects. The total budget's a hundred and thirty-five point six million dollars. Now that's up seven hundred thousand dollars compared to last year, or about a half a percent. Part of the things that are up, however, are in the operating sense and were up because of payroll expenditures, because of added insurance costs, because of some pension funds that have gone up for LOPB. However, it is only up half a percent compared to prior year. Now, the general fund budget is thirty-seven and a half million dollars. That's up about one point four million dollars compared to last year. Again, the increases there are mainly personnel oriented. They include salary increases, which the council approved at the mayor's recommendation early this year. They also included the insurance costs which were raised and so most of those are in the personnel category. As you all recall, we had a very productive, I thought, and the mayor thought, working session for four hours on November ninth where we discussed the budget, went through it in line. That is on the government channel for public viewing and I would encourage anyone who has questions about the budget to look at that if they have not done so already. That's about all I have to say about the budget. I'm sure my speaking for about four hours on Saturday should've been enough for you to listen to so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions do we have for Paul? Anything? Okay, then we'll open it up for some public comment. Anyone from the public would like to speak on the budget? Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Yes, it's you.
I'd like to remind the council that at our budget session I passed out a document that proposed we study a pay plan, a move to a pay plan, next year. We'd study it next year, not move to it next year. A plan that would be similar to the pay plan at the University of Arkansas or the Federal General Services Administration, used by many other governments. I wanted to, everybody have time to think about that before I propose an amendment. I don't wanna propose an amendment to pay for that study today so I would ask that we table this until the next meeting. I make that a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table the budget for two weeks. Any discussion on that? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
No.
Gray?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
No.
Schottmeyer?
No.
Adams?
No.
It is not tabled, it's still open for discussion.
Okay. Well, what would you all like to discuss?
I move we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Is there any discussion on that?
I'd like to say something.
Sure.
You know, I said at the budget session, I thought the budget was near perfect but I really do think we're kicking the can down the road whenever it comes to the employee pay plan. Our budget director has told us numerous times that we're in the red in two thousand and seventeen in the best-case scenario. As it stands right now, the employees who have been with us the longest do not receive cost of living adjustments even whenever we give out raises to the rest of our employees and our new hires come at a rate that is significantly below market, much below market than the rest of our staff who've been with us longer. So while I do think the budget is very good, I think we're making an irresponsible decision by not having that discussion at this time so I vote against it.
Okay, but keep in mind also, just because the budget passes that does not mean that you can't bring it back and have a new pay plan discussion.
Absolutely, and I will plan to do that.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on that? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon? Petty?
No.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, council. All right, number two, vacation thirteen dash forty-five sixteen, Brenda Drive Court and Walton Street, University of Arkansas. An ordinance approving vacation thirteen dash forty-five sixteen submitted by Development Consultants Incorporated for property located west of Razorback Road and north of Center Street to vacate the right-of-way of Brenda Drive Court Street, Walton Street, and a thirty-foot wide alley off of Halt's. Halt's, Hot's Drive, I'm sorry.
Whereas the city council has the authority under ACA fourteen dash three oh one dash three oh one to vacate public grounds or portions thereof which are not required for corporate purposes and whereas the city council is determined to follow inscribed portions of the planted right-of-ways and alleys are not required for corporate purposes and whereas all property abutting said right-of-ways are actually owned by the University of Arkansas. Now therefore being ordained by the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, and that the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby vacates and abandons the following inscribed right-of-ways and exhibit B attached. Section Two, that a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk along with the map attached and labeled Exhibit A shall be filed in the office of the county and recorded in the deed records of the county. In Section Three, that this vacation approval is subject to conditions of approval and shall not be in effect until the conditions are met. Development of this site shall include the construction and dedication of two public streets as indicated in Exhibit C attached here two. Number two, all right-of-ways shall be retained as general utility easements. And number three, any relocation of or damage to an existing utility facility shall be repaired at the property owner's expense.
Chairman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a vacation request submitted by the University of Arkansas. The university has recently acquired numerous properties, twenty-three total properties surrounding these three public streets. The public streets are all currently dead-in cul-de-sac streets. They are all located between Razorback Road and Palmer Avenue and also Hot's Drive and Center Street. The three streets are Brenda Drive, Court Street, Walton Street, and there's also an existing thirty-foot wide alley off of Hot's Drive as part of this request. As I mentioned, every property directly adjacent to these right-of-way are owned by the university and there's actually a specific state statute that talks about public institutions owning right-of-way adjacent to a public street. Normally, you cannot vacate public streets when they've been utilized by the public within five years proceeding. However, there is a provision within our state statute that allows this, which is why the ordinance refers to Section fourteen dash three oh one, three oh one, which is a little bit different than our normal ordinance reference. This did go through the planning commission as part of the review and staff required all the normal utility company reviews and city staff department reviews. In this particular case, all the right-of-way have been used by the public in the last five years. They were primarily by other residents who lived in the homes along those streets or those attending university events. Those homes have since been removed so there are no residents along those particular streets at this time and it's been used almost exclusively now, I think, by the university for parking. The plan, as you can see in your staff report documents, primarily page eight of thirty that was submitted by the university, indicates their plans to construct two new public streets connecting Razorback Road, Hot's Drive, and Center along some parking to facilitate some of the parking needs in that area to assist with that. And so that's one of the conditions of approval within the ordinance. Number one, the development of the site generally shall include construction and dedication of those two public streets. That may not be the exact location but this is, the exhibit was included as a general exhibit to show you the intent behind that request. Staffs recommending approval as did the planning commission unanimously.
What was the vote of the planning commission?
Eight to zero.
Okay. All right, what questions do we have for Chairman on this, council? Anybody? Okay.
So Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
We, it looks like we're going to have, what do the two-hundred-and-seven parking places represent? Is that gonna be all parking lots planned?
It's primarily planned, I think, the applicant or representative from the university may be able to explain their project a little bit better than I but I think the intent there is to provide surface parking for the time being for those, for area students, for students within that area. But I think Mr. Johnson is here.
Mr. Johnson, you want to address?
Evening, Mayor. I'm Jay Young with Development Consultants. We're the petitioners and the developers for the University of Arkansas on this. The parking spaces and the layout of the roads that you see on there are the conceptual plan that we have at this time. We're looking at summer of two thousand and fifteen when these parking lots are anticipated to be built. The number of parking spaces you see there is roughly what we're anticipating putting in there. It may be massaged a little bit depending on what the final layout is and how the parking spaces are positioned but we're looking at roughly a hundred ninety to two-hundred-and-seven or so parking spaces.
What questions do we have, Mr. Young, and this council?
One quick one. One level, all this is gonna be one level, not a parking deck necessarily, just all blacktop lid.
This will all be blacktop parking on ground level.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one question. Are you generally satisfied with the terms and conditions of this vacation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, is there any public comment on this? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council, all right?
Will we suspend the rules and go to the second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Tennant?
Yes.
Schottmeyer?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
An ordinance approving VAC thirteen dash forty-five sixteen submitted by the Development Consultants Incorporated for a property located west of Razorback Road and north of Center Street to vacate the right-of-way of Brenda Drive Court Street, Walton Street, and a thirty-foot wide alley off of Hot's Drive.
Mayor?
Yes.
So in adding all of these up, it looks like six-hundred-and-eight parking places, is that correct?
Come back up to the mic, Mr. Young, before you answer that. We'll be sure we get a good record of that.
All right, will you mind let me look at my papers and see what we're showing?
Oh, and then down at the bottom of our exhibit it says nine hundred total parking spaces.
Okay, what you're seeing on there are the individual spaces on each of those parking lots and in total, we're looking at nine hundred spaces as part of this conceptual plan. That also includes a parking lot that is south of Center Street along Graham Avenue as part of that total.
Yeah, that's forty-four, okay. All right, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we could, could we, would you all mind holding this to the next city council meeting so we can discuss this at the ward four meeting?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. I mean, we'll just hold it.
I agree.
Yeah, unfortunate for us, Mr. Johnson's gonna be at our ward four meeting on Monday night, right?
Yes.
Yes, you are.
He is now.
You are, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I take it to wish the council to hold it on the second reading.
And when is the ward four meeting?
Monday night.
This coming Monday.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll hold it on the second reading. All right, moving along to number three, ADM thirteen dash forty-five twelve, Weddington Drive and Salem Road, Forest Hills, PZD. Modification to Planning Area Two. An ordinance amending a residential plan zoning district titled RPZD oh seven dash twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, to revise the concept plan and zoning criteria for Planning Area Two, reducing the number of dwelling units from one hundred to seventy-two units and removing the requirement for vertical mixed-use built. Catch?
Being ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the zoning criteria booklet and plats for RPZD seven dash twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, are hereby amended to reflect the major modification to the concept plan and zoning criteria in Planning Area Two, reducing the number of dwelling units from one hundred to seventy-two and removing the requirement for vertical mixed-use buildings as reflected in Exhibit A. Section Two, that the planned zoning district ordinances and official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville are hereby amended to reflect the zoning criteria change provided in Section One above.
Okay. Chairman?
The Forest Hills Plan Zoning District is located off of Weddington Drive. It's approximately eighty acres in total, divided into five distinct planning areas. This particular amendment is for Planning Area Two, the village at Forest Hills. It's about eleven acres out of the eighty and it's currently approved to be developed with four three-story mixed-use buildings and four one-story retail and office buildings. To date, two of the one-story buildings have been permitted for Planning Area Two. Planet Fitness was approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand and twelve and is now open. Another four-unit retail building called Aspen Square was also approved by planning staff this year and is currently under construction just southwest of the Planet Fitness Building. The applicant in this case is proposing to construct four single-use multi-story buildings on the south end of Planning Area Two. These buildings, along with the previous commercial buildings I just mentioned, would essentially complete the build-out of that development within that particular planning area. Overall, the final site design of Planning Area Two is consistent with the concept plan approved by the city council as part of the Forest Hills, PZD. However, the plan doesn't meet the overall land use plan if the last four buildings were single-use residential buildings. Therefore, we advised the applicant and they submitted to the Planning Commission and to you all to request that the Planning Commission and council approve an amendment to the Planning Area Two and allow for those four buildings to be constructed as multi-story apartment buildings, not as vertical mixed-use buildings as approved in the PZD. In this particular concept, we've noted that there's still a mixed-use component. It simply is not in vertical mixed-use, it's more horizontal within the site. The Planning Commission looked at this on October twenty-eighth and recommended approval eight to zero and staff is also recommending approval.
Okay, what questions do we have for Chairman on this? Yes, sir.
So seeing here that the ground floor parking area is gonna be designed to resemble habitable space but that it may include the use of entrance features that may not be operable, is that correct? So they're putting fake facades in the buildings?
I think they're likely, there could be. It could be simply openings, articulation in the building where the parking structure is located. Generally, depending upon the elevation, where the structure is located in the topography of the ground outside, openings aren't always able to actually access the parking garage. I think what we're looking at in this particular case is still trying to apply that every fifty feet, trying to have an entrance or some semblance of an entrance in those particular locations, so that's likely what they're referring to. This particular amendment doesn't necessarily go into that much detail. We haven't seen the actual site development plans yet because currently it requires a vertical mixed-use product and so that would follow this particular request if this is approved.
Thank you.
And that would have to come back before the Planning Commission for review as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
I have some concerns about this. Can we hold this on the first reading?
Why? Sir, y'all can do anything you want to, you're the council. If you wanna hold it on the first, second reading, or if you wanna pass it, I will leave that up to y'all. Let me take some public comment. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council. All right.
Jeremy, you said no one came to the planning commission to talk about this?
I don't believe there is any public comment for this or the next item, which is the same.
Has your office heard anything at all? I haven't either, so I'm...
I've heard nothing on this from any constituents.
Yeah, it's y'all's area, so you...
So I guess I would like to say that if you wanna hold it, could you just kinda explain why? Well, you know, I think maybe if we hold it, it might give... I think by talking about it tonight, hopefully we'll get some press on it and people who do have an interest may have an ability to come forward and talk about it. I just think that it's, we're varying from some of our traditional requirements and we're kind of fudging a little bit and so I think we should give a little extra time for the public to comment if there is any.
I take it you wanna hold it on the first reading?
Yes.
What is the consensus of the council?
Can we have a vote?
Well, I guess we could.
It's a motion before you can have a vote.
I mean, you can make a motion, go to the second reading. If it fails, then we know that it'll stay on the first reading, correct?
I just have, I have a question. I guess, Eric, you were saying that it varies from what we normally do but it's a residential plan zoning district and PZDs are variances from what we normally do by definition, so...
I just think it would be good if the public had a little bit more time to weigh in, you know, if we get some press on this and just if there's any discussion to be had. Since you're having a ward meeting, maybe that would be a good opportunity to bring this up. It just seems like we're kind of sticking some of the features on that we want to see but without the functionality we like to see in these types of developments. and so that's raising some concerns.
Okay, well, let me put this another way, does any, I guess, does any council member have, want to go on to the second reading, is there anybody gonna introduce a motion here, we, I mean, I'm... Okay, Will?
Yes, I think we should take it on to the, next to the last reading, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move forward, and then if we wanna hold it before we vote on, that's fine, but let's go ahead and move it forward one, one level.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Patty?
No.
Tennant?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Mayor needs six votes to pass, you can vote to pass...
I'll vote for it.
Okay, so it, the motion to suspend the rules go to the second reading did, uh, pass, and so I will now read the title.
Okay.
An ordinance amending a residential planned zoning district entitled RPZD seven dash twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, revise a concept plan and zoning criteria for Planning Area Two, reducing the number of dwelling units from one hundred to seventy-two, and removing the requirement for vertical mixed-use buildings.
Okay, well...
Gonna leave it on the second, though?
Would be happy to leave it.
Okay, let me leave it on the second reading. Alright, number four, ADM thirteen dash forty-five thirteen, Weddington Drive and Salem Road, Forest Hills, PZD, modification to Planning Area Five. An ordinance amending a residential planned zoning district titled RPZD oh seven dash twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, to revise the, the concept plan and zoning criteria for Planning Area Five, reducing the number of dwelling units from sixty units to thirty-one units, and amending the housing type from townhouses to detached, single-family houses. Kit?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the zoning criteria booklet and plats for RPZD oh seven twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, are hereby amended to reflect the major modification to the concept plan and zoning criteria in Planning Area Five, reducing the number of dwelling units from sixty to thirty-one, and changing the housing type from townhouses to detached, single-family houses as reflected in Exhibit A. Section Two, that the planned zoning district ordinance and official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville are hereby amended to reflect the zoning criteria change provided in Section One above.
Okay, Chairman?
This is another amendment request for the same planned zoning district, Forest Hills, uh, this particular planning area is called the Town Homes at Forest Hills, um, it was Planning Area Five and contained about sixteen acres, the original site plan that allowed for sixty townho, townhouse-style units with rear alley design is within your staff report and packet. Uh, the applicant's proposing to amend that housing type from an attached townhouse, townhouse to a detached, um, single-family home or row house style. Uh, the rear alley access design would still be utilized, um, but the overall unit count would be reduced from sixty to thirty-one units, and a larger portion of the wooded site would remain undeveloped and be dedicated as a tree preservation easement. Um, this particular item also went to the Planning Commission, was voted on with a, uh, vote of eight to zero, and staff is also recommending approval of this item.
Alright, is the developer here tonight on this, they want to do any presentation or something? Okay, alright, um, what questions do we have for Chairman and Council? Okay, um, what public comment do we have on this? Okay, Aubrey.
Aubrey Shepherd, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. This is the first time we've reduced the density anyplace that I know of in years. And all that absorbent soil out on these flat areas is being, uh, buried under red dirt, people can't put in a, a private garden in those yards after the red dirt goes down without packing multiple, many inches of topsoil, uh, to do it, or a raised garden or something like that. You can't put in a butterfly garden, you can't put in, uh, a native plant, uh, yard if you don't keep that original soil. And South Fayetteville's losing its very soil fast to, to new development. So I, I'm glad somebody's thinking about single-family homes, and maybe, maybe the planning folks will see that, uh, that they protect more of that soil in the future. And I, uh, talk about this often, but it goes with all the watershed protection and, and all these other things that we, we, uh, are focused on in this city. And forgive me for wearing my rubber boots, uh, I was in a cleanup this afternoon, which goes along with that, and, um, stream cleanup, and it was just across the street from my house on the town branch, and that would take me back to something, I was busy posting pictures from that project, and watching the meeting, and, and missed the thing about Razorback Road. Um, but, the only problem I had with Razorback Road is that they're filling the existing grassy soils with pipes in that widening process, and there's not going to be absorbent soil along Razorback in that new portion they're working on, which exists now on there. And some more paving in the area for parking lots will also reduce the absorbent soil. That means less protection for the watershed, and that water goes right by my house guns, down the hill, and it floods really fast, and it's really dirty, and you should've seen the debris that the Beaver watershed lines folks, uh, worked to get out of there, just an hour and a half, two-hour thing today. So, everything you can do to keep the soil in place, and let native plants grow, and protect the stream banks, uh, is, in, help us to reduce the cost of cleaning the water, and, uh, it has many other benefits, like potential flooding downstream, or whatever stream is downstream from a particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. I like your sweatshirt, by the way. I didn't catch that. Um, okay, anybody else from the public want to address this on this? Alright, seeing now I'll bring it back to the council. Yes, ma'am.
It does seem to me that this does exactly what Aubrey said, we've got some, we're putting some green space in, we're still gonna have some nice places for citizens to live, we're reducing, um, density, which I think, in this area, supports our, um, goals of reducing sprawl, or minimizing it in some way, I, I don't, I think the reason that we're not hearing from the public and the reason people aren't coming out is because they, they support it, or they're glad to see a, 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 a more minimal project there than was going to be, so I'm ready to, as Ward Four representative, I'm, I'm ready to, to vote on this.
I agree.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, uh, we're gonna go to the second reading here.
I'd make a motion.
Yes, Matthew.
Um, I respect the motion, the sentiment, I probably vote the same way, but I can't support moving on without the applicant being here to even answer questions.
That's a good thing, um, was, it was, if the applicant was here at a, at an agenda session, right? Where was she? That was the applicant who talked at one time, where, who was the applicant?
I'm not sure if they were at an agenda session or not, but, um, I believe they were at the Planning Commission meeting.
At the Planning Commission meeting, so was there any reason they didn't, they decided...
I have not heard any.
Well, I, I respect that, Alderman, Patty, that's a, that's a good thought.
Okay, so...
I would also like to ask the applicant about what the basis is for these changes.
Okay, so, what do y'all wanna do? You wanna hold it?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and move to the second reading, and then hold it for the, and then I'm happy to vote to hold it, but I think we could move it forward one level.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go to the second reading. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Patty?
No.
Tennant?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
An ordinance amending a residential planned zoning district entitled RPZD seven dash twenty-seven ninety-three, Forest Hills, revise a concept plan, plan, and zoning criteria for Planning Area Five, reducing the number of dwelling units from sixty units to thirty-one units, and amending the housing type from townhouses to detached, single-family homes.
Okay, um, Jeremy? Yes, I'm sorry, um, just gonna ask you, I'm sorry, I had, I had a loss of memory there. Can we con, oh yeah, can we contact the applicant and have them at the next meeting?
I'll, I'll make sure that happens.
Okay, alright, we're gonna hold that on the second reading then, right?
Yes.
Alright, alright, number five, ADM thirteen dash forty-four fifty, Pratt Place Inn. An ordinance amending a commercial planned zoning district titled CPZD oh five dash sixteen seventy, Pratt Place Inn, to revise the hours of operations listed in Section One. Kit?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, Section One, that the City Council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, hereby amend CPZD five dash sixteen seventy Pratt Place Inn, to reflect the following hours of operation. Number one, Monday through Saturday, from seven AM until midnight, and from seven AM until ten PM on Sunday, and number two, a maximum of one event on New Year's Eve each year allowed until one AM. Section Two, that the new hours are granted for a trial period of two years from the date of City Council approval. Uh, one year from this approval date, the City Council, uh, shall review any valid complaints and/or violations and determine at that time if the new operating hours should be extended beyond the two-year period. Section Three, that the planned zoning district ordinance and official zoning map of the City of Fayetteville are hereby amended to reflect zoning criteria change provided in Section One above.
Chairman?
In two thousand and five, the City Council approved a commercial planned zoning district called Pratt Place Inn, this is located on approximately seventy-two acres at the end of Markham Road west of the University of Arkansas, uh, and located within a largely residential and undeveloped area. The PZD at that time granted the owner's approval to operate a small inn, a restaurant, and to host special events such as weddings, receptions, and private parties. The event grounds contain a five thousand square foot inn and restaurant, a fifty-four hundred square foot Pratt Place Barn event space, parking lots supporting those uses, a small cottage, and the, um, the applicant and property owner's residence. Included with the approval of this PZD were restrictions on the hours and days of operation. Specifically, the Pratt Place Inn, uh, currently may operate from seven AM until ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, and from seven AM until midnight on Friday and Saturday. Over the course of the last few years, um, the city staff has received complaints, uh, relative to the operations of the Pratt Place Inn property, primarily related to noise. Uh, we invested those complaints with the assistance of the Police Department, uh, in all of those cases, we determined that, uh, none of the noise ordinance, uh, there was no violation of any of the noise ordinance, um, uh, requirements. However, on two occasions, we did determine that, um, the hours of operation of the planned zoning district were in violation. Um, obviously, the Police Department could not make that call on the spot, uh, eleven PM or one AM, uh, so they, uh, consulted with us, and we were able to determine that. We did send, uh, the Archers, who are the property owners and applicant in this case, violation letters, and that's all detailed in your packets, um, about the compliance with the conditions of approval for the planned zoning district. Um, they indicated they would, they actually changed management, uh, did comply, we received another complaint in April of this year, I believe that's the, the most recent com, official complaint that we've received, uh, regarding the operating hours. We did substantiate that complaint and mailed a final, uh, violation notice to the owners and management, which led to a meeting with, um, Mr. and Mrs. Archer, and ultimately, this request, uh, to modify their planned zoning district conditions of approval related to the hours of operation. As you all know, with the planned zoning district, generally, conditions of approval are related to the development of a project, so an applicant must meet certain conditions throughout the development of that project, and once those are met, the, the property and its operation simply goes on about its business. In this particular case, there are actually operational, um, constraints relative to the planned zoning district. Uh, this request is to change some of those, to amend the hours of operation, specifically, the request is to, uh, change the operating hours from seven AM until midnight, Monday through Saturday, and also until ten PM on Sunday. Um, and secondly, it's to allow up to ten events per calendar year until two AM with certain stipulations. Um, the Pratt Place Inn and Barn has been in operation for approximately six years, uh, in our opinion, and in speaking with neighbors, without significant impact to the neighborhood, um, based on our observations and input. There have been, as we noted, um, some incidents of operating outside the hours of operation, and certainly some complaints about, uh, general noise or music generally, uh, within the area. Um, we did some research, as did the applicant, about similarly-located facilities, event spaces within residential areas or areas that were undeveloped, um, primarily around the hours of operation, because that's what this request was. We found that, in general, um, most close at midnight, uh, most days of the week. Um, we don't know, for all of those, if there are additional zoning restrictions, things of that nature, um, some have some communication here by email that you see within your packet that they have no other restrictions, some actually charge a, a premium to operate outside of the hours of operation, um, but this particular case is tied to the zoning of the property. Um, we, in our review of this project, we felt the owners, um, could be allowed to extend the hours of operation on certain days on a trial basis, and therefore, we recommended a two-year period, uh, to review, um, what occurs within the two-year period. Um, we did, uh, recommend that, um, the provision to operate would extend, uh, Sunday, seven AM till ten PM, um, and also Monday through Saturday, seven AM till midnight, which gives a few more days of extension until midnight, um, the event would have to be over, uh, at that point in time. On the second part of the request, allowing up to ten events per calendar year until two AM, uh, we could not come to, to agreement on that particular request. Uh, we did not see that to be a very common element in a lot of the, um, similar event spaces that we saw, unless it was in a commercial setting. Um, so there's many commercial settings that have event spaces, we have some in Fayetteville, there are some in Rogers, um, but they're in a commercial setting where restaurants, bars, other things like that are already operating that late. Um, none of the ones that we saw really operated this, um, until this period, uh, within a residential area, and obviously, within a residential area, there, there are things not, not only related to noise, but traffic, um, those types of things that, that occur within those areas. So we did not recommend in favor of that, um, particular part of the request. We did, um, find there was a good point made on New Year's Eve, which a lot of people are out and about on New Year's Eve, and, um, there should be some, some allowance there, so we did recommend that on New Year's Eve, uh, each year, there would be one, um, allowance until one AM on those, that particular night, um, and, uh, those conditions would follow with the, with the PZD and become new conditions of approval of the planned zoning district if you approve those. Um, and then lastly, the condition, as I mentioned already, the third condition of this would be that the new hours are granted only for a trial period of two years from the date of City Council approval, um, and then we would review, um, any valid complaints that we receive, investigate those, just as we do now, uh, and report those to you as necessary to, to see if that two-year period trial could be extended, uh, with these hours of operation. Um, that is staff's recommendation, uh, you'll notice this did not go to the Planning Commission like the two amendments before, and I, I've mentioned why at the agenda session. This is the only planned zoning district that came, uh, under a different set of rules before the City Council, um, that only the City Council reviewed, the Planning Commission did not make a recommendation on this planned zoning district. Uh, those rules were changed right after this project, um, and so all other PZDs have gone through a different, a little bit different review process, but, um, this is, simply came just before you, uh, for this zoning criteria, since those conditions were created at the council level. Um, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions, I know Mr. Archer is here, uh, to, uh, provide any information or answer any questions as well.
Mr. Archer, would you like to make a presentation to the council?
Yes, excuse me, good evening, Julian Archer, twenty-one fifteen West Markham Road, my wife Jane and I are the owners of Pratt Place Inn. First of all, let me apologize for the way I sound, I, uh, had an operation, a tracheotomy, and they've damaged my vocal cord, so, uh, if any of you wanna sign me up for a role with The Godfather or any film, please do, I would be, uh, willing, uh, to follow in Martin Brando's footsteps there, uh, although I hope I don't die quite the way he did. Anyway, uh, I have a great deal of material here, but I, uh, am somewhat astonished, as I think most of you are, that there's no one from Ward Four here to speak. I understand that's a desire to allow the residents of Ward Four to have time to digest this, although it, of course, has been handled properly here by being noted in the minutes, and so rather than my taking time tonight to explain when there's no one from the board, if you would like to postpone this until the next, uh, council meeting, I think that would be better, the remarks, my remarks will be fresh in mind, and whatever remarks there are from other people will be fresh in mind as well.
Okay, I think council...
Fine idea.
Any question for Mr. Archer? Okay.
Well, I will... Well, I will await your movie contract in the mail.
All right. Is there any?
I just want to say that it's been very pleasant working with Jeremy and Jesse. They've been enormously cooperative and patient in dealing with what's a complex issue. And I want to thank them both for their work.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Archer. Is there any other public comment on this?
Well, I actually live in Ward One, but as it happens, the water from Pratt Place goes by my house, I'm stuck down the town branch. At least the part that's on the eastern slope. So, I, I can't speak for Ward Four residents on the noise or anything, but as Mr. Archer points out, there were many people to speak about this earlier, and so, I think they deserve a chance to do that. And I wonder if notice was sent to them that there would be a hearing on this change ahead of time. That is, not all Ward Four, unless you get it to a Ward Four meeting, but to the people who live the nearest and might be bothered by something. Apparently, they haven't been complaining since then, if I understand what was said. But they do deserve that chance always. Thank you.
Thank you. Any kind of notices or anything?
No, for this particular type of item, there is no requirement for any type of notice to be presented to anyone, except, the exception obviously being published in the public agenda.
Absolutely. Council members, Ward Four, what's your thoughts?
Well, I'd just like to say this is a little different, too, because it didn't go through Planning Commission. So, that's one less place for folks to hear about it. And I've met with Mr. Archer, we had a good meeting, and he's explained his position to me. I have had a couple of emails, but I have not announced to people in the neighborhood or to citizens that, that this was coming forward, and I don't think you really have either. Unfortunately, we have pretty heavy schedule Monday night at Ward Four meeting with two guests, and so, we might, we might be able to go a little longer and talk about this. But I definitely think, in light of the fact that the Planning Commission didn't hear this as on the previous two items they did, then it's a great idea to hold this and let us get some feedback.
Mayor, I will say that I was interviewed yesterday, on a local television station, so there's a story out about it as well. It came out this morning on forty-twenty-nine TV. So, if anyone's interested in that interview about the request, they're certainly able to go to their website and review that.
I would certainly encourage the council to look at the old tapes and review all the meeting minutes from that period of time, because you will find it most interesting. I was a council member from that ward at that time. That was, I ran the first council meeting when we had about thirty residents in here that probably were not quite as excited. So, I will.
Mayor.
Just me.
I have one question of Jerry, Jeremy, if I might. The decibel levels, are those decibel levels for residential areas?
It is. So, the way the noise ordinance works, what is measured is at the decibel level of the adjoining property. So, if someone is complaining, a police officer will stand there and take a reading, and the noise decibel limitation is measured based on what their property is. So, in most of these cases, it's going to be residential, residential decibel levels.
That's what I thought.
Which is a lower than, lower decibel level than.
Sure.
Commercial.
And I think that's, I think that piece of information is very significant. Thank you.
Okay. So, I assume we're gonna leave it on the first reading? Oh, okay. Okay. Moving round and round. Numbers, number, number six, new federal planning area. Resolution to confirm the approval of the Planning Commission to designate the attached map and describe boundary as the new federal planning area. Who has this? Jeremy?
I do. This is a request brought forward by staff related to a recent change in state law. Our state statutes related to planning ordinances and zoning ordinances require a Planning Commission and ultimately City Council within the state of Arkansas to prepare a map designated what's called our territorial jurisdiction, for which we will prepare plans, recommend ordinances, and regulations outside the city limits. This area designated is known as what we call the planning area. Generally speaking, the planning area is an area that the City Planning Commission thinks that is going to be, quote, "set" at some reasonable future date. It is within that area that defines where subdivision regulations are enforced, and the master street plan and other plans are formulated. State statutes also control how far a planning area may extend from our city limit boundary. During the last state legislative session, the extent to which cities may exercise those regulations was reduced by Act ten fifty-three, and thus, the need for all cities to amend their boundaries to comply with the recent state law. For a city of our size, between sixty thousand and one hundred and fifty thousand in population, the planning area boundary may extend up to two miles from the city limit line. If, however, there's another city within two miles, the line shall be equidistant between the two, or to some agreed-upon line between the two respective municipalities. The City of Fayetteville has not adopted a new planning area map in over ten years. It's not, there's not been a new one adopted since I've been here, and yet, it's grown quite a bit by annexation, much like our neighboring cities. As a result, in most cases, Fayetteville's planning area boundary is really set by default. We have, I think, six or seven cities, and those, that's represented on page seven of ten. You can see all the different colors in that particular map where other cities' municipal boundaries or planning area boundaries are within that two-mile area. So, for the most part, this exercise did not take a lot of time. It was exercises in GIS to reflect where other cities had grown, where we had grown, and what our, ultimately, our planning area boundary could be. There's an exception to that, really on the west side of Fayetteville, you can see, I'm gonna refer to page, again, page seven of ten. On the west side of Fayetteville, where we annexed by election back in two thousand and six, there is potential to, to go further than what we have recommended. We've recommended essentially to extend to the section line, which makes the legal description more easily formulated, but it also incorporates existing subdivision as opposed to taking out, take, going halfway through a subdivision. And then, on the eastern and southeastern side, we also elected to incorporate Lake Wilson and the parks surrounding that. It's already within the city limits, however, it was outside our planning area. So, we are recommending essentially to incorporate that portion. And then finally, on the east side there, along Goshen's Planning Area, we also elected to extend the planning area in that particular location, because the City of Fayetteville owns that property as part of our wastewater treatment plant operations. That was within Goshen's Planning Area, and we, discussing that with them, we felt it would be more proper within City of Fayetteville. All other boundaries, really, particularly to the north, are along city limit lines. So, it's basically our city limit line adjacent to other cities such as Springdale and Johnson and Tonnington. It's roughly an equidistant line. Along Farmington, it's primarily along the city limit line. Greenland, primarily along the city limit line. Elkins, primarily an equidistant line there. And so, the exhibit that you find on page five of ten shows ultimately the map that we are recommending the council approve or affirm that the Planning Commission also recommended to you. Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning does, deserves a lot of credit for the creation of these maps, particularly with the smaller cities, they worked to create almost every small city's map for them, present them to their planning commissions and city councils as well, and for that, we appreciate that, that assistance as well. And so, staff has recommended approval of this particular resolution.
Okay. What questions do we have, council, on this? No? Okay. What public comment do we have on this?
Great night. Thank you. Aubrey Shepherd again. Once again, we don't have the map showing this on our screen in this room, and I assume the public's not getting to see it at this moment on television. And I wondered if that could be hooked up to show those planning boundaries as often as done on things during, during the rest of the presentation tonight.
Okay. Do we have that capability?
I, I could try, it'll probably take a while, but I can, I can do that if you'd like.
I should note for Aubrey that really there are very minor changes made to the map. The existing map we had is pretty much the same. We made some reductions here and some, some additions there. By and large, I think, Jeremy, you'd probably agree, it's pretty close to what we have right now.
Well, I.
The map is also available to the public in both the city clerk's notice of packet as well as online.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the consideration of it. I, I thought it might, I didn't get to look at it today, and I assume a lot of people did not, although I posted your packet of information on my own site as well.
Should we move on to the next item and come back to this after Jeremy gets a chance to?
I suppose we could.
Be able to do that, let Peter go ahead and do, would that be possible?
It's possible, although I do think Jeremy's probably gonna want to discuss the next item, but it might be that.
Because it's the food truck guy.
Matthew can lead the way on that before Jeremy comes back.
Hang on just a minute. Thank you, Don. Okay.
Well, let me, are we not going to take action on this?
I thought that the council wanted to go on to the next item and then come back to this one to see if we can pull up something.
That takes a motion to suspend the rules, because you're changing the agenda at this point in time to consider something else.
Second.
All right. The council has a motion in the second to cha, suspend this item till later in the meeting.
Yeah, suspend the rules and go to item number seven, amend chapter one seventy-eight.
Okay. All right. Everybody good with that? All right. Sandra, would you please call the robe?
Long.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Mar.
Yes.
Patty.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
Schottmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Okay. All right, let's go on to number seven. Number seven, amend chapter one seventy-eight. An ordinance to repeal one seventy-eight point oh-three sidewalk vendors and enact a replacement one seventy-eight point oh-three sidewalk vendors and food trucks, and to repeal one seventy-eight point oh-four outdoor mobile vendors located on private property and enact a replacement one seventy-eight point oh-four outdoor mobile vendors located on private property. Kip.
Be it ordained by the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the City Council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section one seventy-eight oh-three sidewalk vendors and enact a replacement section one seventy-eight oh-three sidewalk vendors and food trucks, as shown on exhibit A attached here, too. Section two, that the City Council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby repeal section one seventy-eight oh-four outdoor mobile vendors located on private property and enact section one seventy-eight oh-four outdoor mobile vendors located on private property, as shown on exhibit B attached here, too.
All right. Peter?
Good evening, Mayor, council. The changes before you would affect the Unified Development Code, chapter one seventy-eight, outdoor mobile vendors. It would clarify existing regulations, create a short and long-term process for mobile vendors, and also allow mobile food trucks to operate on private property daily inside the City of Fayetteville. Two chapters, sections are, have changes proposed to them. Chapter one seventy-eight oh-four, which regulates outdoor mobile vendors on private property. Those proposed changes include requiring that mobile vendors not match the primary food or beverage offering for the brick and mortar business located directly adjacent to that mobile vendor, to the, to the property that mobile vendor's on. Another change would be that mobile vendor permits would be granted to, jointly to both the property owner and the mobile vendor applicant. Currently, the temporary permit process for mobile vendors only allows for a permit of ninety days in length. That's approved administratively through staff. These changes would extend the duration of those temporary permits for six months from the current ninety days. The, the temporary permit would also require that, at the end of that six months, the mobile vendor is required to move up to one, minimum of one quarter mile from their current location. That's a change, right now, they're required to remove one half mile, so a reduction in that requirement. We're replacing, proposing to replace the variance section of the chapter and call it an annual permit. That annual permit would be limited to one year. Those annual permits would come to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would be able to review those permits and place improvement requirements on the property owner and the mobile vendor applicant at the time when, when those annual permits were up for renewal, which a particular property might have a mobile vendor that could reapply for an annual permit for, for more than one year, you know, year after year after year if they wanted to. The outdoor mobile vendors that are seeking that annual permit would be required to provide a list of nearby businesses that provide similar food items. That's a, that's a change in the way that, that process is done right now. Right now, there's a, a staff finding related to that, and this, putting this requirement on the mobile vendor operators was an attempt at, at reducing some staff workload related to permitting mobile vendors. There's also a proposed requirement that outdoor mobile vendors comply, that, that allow the public inside their trailers comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Under the changes, proposed changes to chapter one seventy-eight oh-three, currently, that is, just regulates sidewalk vendors. It's being proposed that that would be expanded to include food trucks. Food trucks are the, the type of food vendors that, that basically leave the, the property every day. They don't remain on-site overnight. There's actually a specific requirement in the code that requires them to move for a certain period of time. Those food trucks would be approved through an administrative process, similar to the, the temporary permits for mobile vendors. Food truck permits would, similar to mobile vendors, be granted to both the food truck operator and the property owner. And food truck vendors would not be able, would also not be able to match the primary food or beverage offering of the brick and mortar business directly adjacent to the property. Those food truck permits are good, each, under this proposal, the food truck permits are good for only one location, so one, one property, but a food truck vendor that wanted to operate on Monday in one location and Tuesday in a different location, Wednesday in a third location, could have three different permits, or as many different permits as they wanted to hold for different locations where they wanted to operate during different days of the week. These changes were presented to the Planning Commission on October fifteenth. They were supported by the Planning Commission by a vote of seven to two. The Planning Commission did support some slight modifications to the, to the code, which we did, staff did support and include in the proposed changes that are before you tonight.
Okay. What questions do we have for Peter on this? Kip.
Peter, I'm, where the yellow highlighting is, are those? So, I'm looking at one seventy-eight oh, I'm looking at page twelve of twenty, one seventy-eight oh-three, part two, section two. Does that, is that supposed to say to allow mobile food trucks to flourish? I don't think F-L-U-O-R.
I believe it is.
That's floric.
Thank you, right.
Do we mean that?
I'm pretty sure we mean to flourish.
Okay. That's what I thought. Not a big deal, but I'm just trying to say, ask you mainly, is that yellow part, why is it, why are the highlights there in this? I think I know, but.
So, the yellow is, denotes changes.
Okay.
Okay? And then, anything in bold under the yellow is an addition, and anything with strikeout under the yellow is a deletion.
So, that part two is new?
Yes.
And that's just a typo, is it?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Jeremy, do you have anything you want to add to this, or?
Just that Aldrin, Patty brought this to, to our attention initially, and we've been working on it for quite a while. We, obviously, with Peter's guidance and leadership, we've worked with planning staff on, on a lot of this, and also worked with Q Mayor to determine, I think, what we felt was something we could bring forward that we, staff could support. I think some of these, some of these make, actually makes it easier on us to administer the permits. One of the reasons that we found in favor, we'd actually initially, from the ninety-day permit, went to a hundred and twenty, and then staff supported a hundred and eighty, primarily because you look at a lot of these mobile vendors, and they are seasonal. A lot of, a lot of mobile vendors have brought requests before the Planning Commission to extend for the season or for the rest of the year. I'm pretty sure, without exception, they've all been approved virtually. And, and so, we, we felt, much like you see in other ordinances, when you see something happen over and over again, maybe it's time to revisit the ordinance, and so, this is one of those cases. But I also feel like there, there has been a success story. But I also feel like there, there has been a success story, and Matthew or Sarah may want to speak to this, but we've seen some of these businesses move to brick and mortar and become a part of the community, either leasing or purchasing a space, and utilize this mobile vending as a test market for them. On the flip side, there's, there's a citizen here tonight, a business, local business owner who has a brick and mortar business, and they're looking to get into the mobile vending business, so you see a little bit of both. And so I think that, much like a lot of cities that we, that we researched, progressive cities in the mobile vending industry, we want to be, we want to encourage that, we want those to flourish where, where it's possible, but also keep in mind that established businesses do have certain requirements that they have to meet, ADA accommodations, certain improvements they have to meet, and so we've tried to find a good balance, a working balance with that, this particular amendment, and hopefully you will agree with that.
Okay, yes.
Thanks, Mayor. I think Peter did an excellent job explaining what the changes are and Jeremy contextualizing it, so I don't have too much to add, but you know, we've been working on, on this for almost two years.
Yes, we have.
And it started with a meeting that I was asked to attend at Little Bread Company. There were about 30 people interested in starting a food truck, and perhaps they were just individuals and others there already had businesses. And the reason, one of the reasons it took so long is, I think, one of the primary roles of staff on this was reeling me in a little bit, so thank you for that. Were I to write this on my own, I'd be much more liberal about it, but I still think that this is a good ordinance to pass. One of the pieces, though, that I think is gonna come up soon is food vending on public property. That's something that this ordinance really doesn't address. So, the typical food truck model goes beyond private property and includes parallel parking spaces all over the community. This ordinance does not allow for that. It does not expand to that. I suspect we'll hear from some of the, some of the citizens tonight that they would like to see that. There are multiple ways of addressing that, and whether or, if we don't address it now, I'll be coming back in the next six months at some point and asking that we do address it. But if this council wants to go ahead and take that on, I'll support that as well, and if we want to do that, I suggest we go to ordinance review. Either way, whether we do that or not, I'll support the ordinance that we end up with.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
And I'm not sure if this is a Alderman-Patty question or Jeremy question or what, but to your point about public property, who manages the food vendors that go to Gully Park during the concert series?
So, that's a great question, and it's actually an inconsistency in our current ordinances. If you look at our park ordinances now, all commercial sales are prohibited, so the Gully Park vending is kind of an anomaly in that, and I don't want to speak too much for the parks department, but I know that they were considering a tandem ordinance with this to allow them to issue event permits for vending with food trucks and regular vending. I think that's something we should do, but again, I think that's something we should actually go a little bit farther with.
I do want to make one quick correction on that. The ordinances actually were written to allow for the Gully Park concert vendors specifically as an exemption in the current.
That's correct. There are several exemptions, and the Gully Park vendors were one of the exceptions that the city council passed and placed into the code, so we are following the code, we are not violating the code.
Right, and that's, that's why I called it an anomaly, because we don't allow that in general. So, I think that's something we should allow, that's something that we should talk about either now or whenever this comes up again.
And I would say to Alderman-Patty's comment, the staff is very supportive of having this discussion as it relates to public parks, it's come up. Recently, I played in a tennis tournament in another state that allows mobile vending in their parks, it gave much more of a food option for those of us who were participating than being in traditional concessionaire food, and came back and shared their ability to make those offerings on a much broader basis, the parks department was very open to it. I think the issue and why you don't see them in tandem here today is because that discussion kind of came up at the end of, of where this was, and we didn't want to delay this one any further, but there's very much support for addressing the parks item. It also is going to be relevant because probably one of the most requested areas to be looked at is mobile vending as it relates to our downtown square area, which is a park, and so it gives us some limitations on that and why we want to do it. And as we go out and continue to approve capital for concession projects, it gives us the ability to potentially scale those back some to be more cost-efficient in our investment in concessions constructed by allowing mobile vending as alternative options, not only in diversity of options offered, but in us not having to bear the entire cost of providing facilities to make those offerings. So, those are the reasons that staff is supportive of this discussion coming forward. It's just a matter of, we haven't, there are two, in two totally separate parts of the code managed by two totally separate divisions, and so the parks group, we've been focused on lights of the Ozarks and some of our year-end activities, and we'll get on to this.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification.
Okay. Anything, yes, oh, sorry.
First, I want to thank Alderman-Patty for his work on this sorely needed ordinance update. Mobile vending is an important tool for economic development, business incubation, and neighborhood revitalization, as well as incremental sprawl repair. And mobile vendors can also play an important role, specifically food trucks, in helping us diversify our culinary landscape, bring healthy foods into food deserts, and enlarge the market for local foods. As some of you may be aware, I had the pleasure this last week of attending the National League of Cities Conference in Seattle where I made a presentation on the state of mobile vending in Fayetteville, and I facilitated a panel discussion entitled "Mobile Vending: Emerging Industry and Outdated Regulations." I learned about a lot of mobile vending success stories and challenges in other communities from their municipal leaders, as well as from representatives of the national and state restaurant associations. They had some really good lessons learned and recommendations to share, and so I would really like to see this go to ordinance review so that we can incorporate some of those ideas into this ordinance, and also to give everyone an opportunity to review this new report by the National League of Cities. It's called "Food on Wheels: Mobile Vending Goes Mainstream." I think there's a lot of things that we can learn from, especially in dealing with the permits. One of the things that they had recommended was separate permits for vendors and locations, so that a vendor could get a long-term permit, and then the location would be separate, a separate permit, so that those vendors could move around more easily. And a lot of cities that started out with a one-year permit length are now going to two years, because there's a significant amount of investment involved in starting up one of these mobile vending units, and in order to make that economically viable, I think they need a longer commitment. They'd also talked about navigating joint use agreements for restrooms and sanitation facilities, as well as some tips for balancing the interest of mobile vendors and brick and mortar businesses, and they had some great ideas for forming partnerships with local farmers. So, after we hear public comments tonight, I am gonna move that we go to, to ordinance review.
Okay. Any other questions for Peter or Matthew or Jeremy? All right, what public comment do we have on this?
I hope some more people come down to help with this next time. Yes, consider that other part that was just brought up by, by Councilmember Marsh, but we do love those vendors, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.
My name is Cody Nethers, and in case you don't know who I am, I have the Hopper food truck. As far as I'm concerned, it's us and nomads that are the only trucks in town, pretty much. Thank you for, I've never met you, Mr. Mar, Ms. Marsh, but thank you for that as well, Councilman Patty. I've really appreciated everything that has come forth. I've been in Fayetteville for the last seven years and been studying food trucks for the last year or so, going down to Austin, I built my truck. Pretty much for what I think the blank slate food truck we need for Fayetteville, I work strictly with the farmer's market. All of the proteins come from our farmer's market, and basically, with less overhead that I have to do, it gives me the budget to buy the proteins that are three times more from our farmer's market. I can't really do it any other way, so that is much appreciated. I will say that, as of right now, I'm kind of being a martyr because the, asking $100 to park in each place, I mean, if that goes five times, that's $500 every six months, and to be honest, I'll just take the traffic ticket of parking where I'm gonna be. That doesn't, and my numbers seem to compute, and then it also doesn't ever seem to be a problem with Ozark cleaners or anyone else that I park in front of and bring more attention to their business. So, I'm not real sure what to do with that, and would love any council that would come back my way. I guess I'm basically just here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay, we have any questions for?
I know everything about food trucks, so. I guess, then in closing, I, I would say like, down in the industrial park, for instance, as far as the parks go, there's a baseball complex there that would be primed to park at, and those people only have a half hour for lunch, and when they do, it's pretty much that great little place that used to be Pops there, where they have to go to fast food or something like that. So, this all originally started because I wanted to roll up, as Ms. Marsh said, with food deserts. Over on Portland, for instance, there's the church there, and that's pretty much it for that whole neighborhood, there is no other thing. So, we're, like I said, we're really not here to step on people's toes at all, and I understand, you know, hearing brick and mortars have competition and everything come in, but at the same time, it's hard for me to not be able to park on Dixon and offer a non-traditional taco because Los Lobos is serving whatever they serve. We need to let the public choose. The public choose my food truck over anything else. I haven't been in the media, I haven't done anything. I've been parking in places to see if this actually works, to see if this is what people want, and it's kept my business in the black. Like, so far, I'm operating outside of all these variances, and I'm doing it with profit, and that only tells me one thing, that this is what people really are going after. So, like I said, I, I can look like I'm a rebel without a cause, but that's really not the case. I'm just trying to wake up every day and serve something to our town that I feel is needed, so. In closing, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to address this on this?
Travis Felton with the Felton Brothers. First of all, you know, as, as Jeremy said, I am the one with the two brick and mortar stores, as most of you know, and we are looking at doing a food truck, and this is perfect timing for us, I've had a chance to email correspondence with Mr. Patty. Jeremy and I have had a chance to sit down together and visit about a few things in his office as well over email, so first of all, I just want to say thank you for even moving to this point with this. This is, this is awesome, this is what Fayetteville needs, it's the perfect city, it's the perfect area of Arkansas or something like this. And as Mr. Patty said too, that they probably will come up about public parking. I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse, because I think just this in itself is, is, is good for now, but I think it will come up, you know, to where the public parking is an issue, because I think that's why most people decide to go with the, I'm speaking mainly in just terms of the trucks, not the trailers. I think that's why people do go or choose to go with the truck as opposed to a trailer, for that freedom of travel and moving and actually having an engine and a steering wheel, and there are a lot of times on, in, in the news and all the other media where trailers are called trucks, and they're not trucks, they're trailers. You can only move it if you attach a truck to it and move it that way. What, I, I think, I, I agree with just about everything the permit says, or the, the rules about getting the permit say. I do have one question. In our instance, we, what, the main reason we decided to do a food truck is we get call after call after call for, you know, us to cater an event for 250 people. We've had them calls for 1,000 people, and up until this point, we'd have to shut, you know, one of the two stores down to be able to accommodate somebody like that for that many people. We'd have to shut it down to the public, and that just causes a whole nother realm of problems. We get calls for catering to where, you know, I think it becomes a vocabulary word at that point. If, if somebody, you know, pays us in advance to go, you know, we get office parks, for ex, or not, not office parks, but, you know, hospitals or clinics and stuff like that. If they pay us in advance to go there, we're not actually taking any form of payment on site, is that still considered mobile vending at that point where a permit's needed? Also, too, the only thing, a question I have about having to have a permit for each location is, it'd be really tough if we got a call from, you know, an office park or something, their property manager, and said, hey, we got 200 to 300 people here, we'd love you guys to come park out here on Wednesday, you know, we're looking for burgers and fries and onion rings, can y'all come do that on Wednesday next week? 200 to 300 people, 300 to 400 people, we've already had calls for an office park in Bentonville for 400 to 500 people, and they want us to be there several days a week, and I can imagine things like that may start happening here in Fayetteville, and if we have those opportunities in Bentonville and Rogers to go park up there three or four days a week, and we don't have them here, it'd be tough to stay in Fayetteville with the truck, so it'd be nice to see that if we do get a phone call for 200 or 300 people that we don't have to get a permit for that before we go, because most of the time for that large number of people, an office park's not gonna pay for 200 or 300 people to eat, you know? When we pull up, they're gonna be paying one at a time as they come up to the, to the truck, and, and I think that's just where the freedom and the ability to get in it, crank it up, and take off comes in, and, and I know there's a lot more to it, you know, from a, you know, keeping a grasp on things from y'all's standpoint than, than how I see it, but I know some of those kind of issues will come up. And if there's any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, do we have any questions, Mr. Fel?
Mr. Mayor, I would say that probably what he described was catering, since they were not doing individual sales, they were actually servicing a business all on private property, so I would think that, that probably should not be required under here for you to get a permit, but this is part of the Unified Development Code, and so the official interpreter of that is Mr. Payne, not myself, so he, his, his interpretation controls, but if it, if his interpretation's different, then we probably need revised ordinance such that catering is specifically not within a food truck just going out somewhere and trying to sell to anybody.
And, and, well, and too, the catering would be like, they call and say, we've got 200 people, we tell them so many dollars ahead, and they cut us a check, and we receive that one check when we get there, but what about for the 200 to 300 people, where we're gonna go park at the office, and we don't know out of that 200 or 300 people if 100 are gonna come eat, or 50 or 75, but we had a personal invite to bring us there on any given day. They call on Monday and say, hey, we got something going on on Friday, you know, we've had a lot of requests for bringing some food to the property, can you guys come?
I think that would probably be the second version that you're talking about, would be fall underneath this particular ordinance then.
And no permit being needed, depending on what Jeremy would say?
I would agree with Mr. Williams. I think that the first example, we would treat it much like anyone else that caters an event. We don't classify them as a restaurant just because they're catering an event and setting up and serving food there. Basically, a specific event just for those individuals prepaid, you know, you're not really, you're not really taking payment for anything. I think the second version, though, I could come off the street probably and, and also ask for a burger or whatever it happens to be and pay for that, so to me, that would be, you're, you're vending essentially in that type of particular locations. I would say that probably would require a permit. I think that the multiple, the multiple permit thing, it seems to me with, particularly if you have multiple locations, it'll be easier for us to turn around that pretty quickly, just because we'll know your truck, we'll know exactly what it is, and all you do is submit the location, and we can just run that through our review, so I don't think the turnaround would be at all difficult to, to make, but it would require, you know, make sure the zone is correct, things like that, so. I think also we could talk about, you know, how you structure that if it, if it's not allowed, then perhaps you could structure your agreement with whatever the business that is, so that it is almost a catering essentially contract as opposed to something that's open, and that may allow you to be able to do that more.
Okay. And as we discussed, you know, I think we are somewhat of a rare exception, because we do have our commissary location where that truck is gonna be taken to every night, walk-in refrigerators, freezers, grease trap for waste removal and the whole thing, and you know, we, we have a little bit of a different viewpoint on it, and if there's any thing we can do to help answer any questions, you know, we've talked before, we'd be happy to do it.
Okay. All right.
All right, thanks. All right, thank you.
No, no, everybody gets one turn. All right. This council member brings you up.
I'll bring him up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Come back up.
I also have a commissary. We have Brick House Kitchen on the south side of town, which I'm trying to open up to where, I know it makes everyone kind of nervous, like where our food comes from, but, like, I'm trying to open it up to where we all have a commissary and have a joint commissary like that, because that isn't really possible in town right now. I've looked. I guess the takeaway from all this, and I wanted to kind of hear everyone out before I proposed this, before we consider that, I guess what I would propose is that us food trucks will regulate ourselves. If there was a possibility that the city wanted to pass, I'm glad that there's an awareness that there's a difference between the trailers and the trucks and what the trucks do. But it seems like there's not enough room, and then there would be just this explosion, and no one would be able to regulate. And then we've got to go into each different place that we're gonna park, which honestly, I'd pull up to Pinnacle Foods right now, and I'm catering because I just assumed that that would fall under catering instead of vending, because there's no one that's gonna walk off the street from Pinnacle Foods to go up there. So we just kind of worked it out with them, and their employees seem to be very happy that they don't have to eat out of the vending machines. And I can't wait to go back and serve them again tomorrow. But I guess, the way that I've seen all the big cities do it, when I go to New York, when I go to Seattle, when I go do all this, they have a certain number of licenses that you can get, and then the trucks all regulate themselves. It keeps it out of everyone's hair. We come just like the brick and mortars would and say, hey, this guy's operating illegally. We've met everything else, which is why I left my truck to be such a blank slate. I just needed to know what the city wanted to adapt to and things like that and kind of use it. So, in the end, after everything that I've heard and considered, just for my business model, which I believe is the only actual truck, the topping around Fayetteville right now and being an actual food truck, it doesn't work. And that's totally okay. I was just letting everyone know before we would go to remission of the amendment. So, I do appreciate you letting me come back up. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette Beltrum. I am, can you see it down there?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a little bit better? I'm very nervous, by the way. I'm not the one who usually speaks on behalf of best frickin' chicken in town. That is my fiancee Clayton. He does a lot of the talking, so, but he is teaching in Little Rock, so I'm here on behalf of him and part of the vendors. Again, Jeanette Beltrum with best frickin' chicken in town. I guess, originally, I'm from California, and so I have been able to see how the mobile trucks have started out there when I was very young. They called them the Roach Coaches. But I'll tell you, those were the best places to eat, because when they rolled up, you knew you were getting good food. And when you're saying something about, you know, what the product of our food or where it's coming from, we are approved by the Health Department. Everybody, I mean, if you want to come up and ask me about where my food comes from, you want to come behind my trailer and see how I cook and what I do, more power to you, because we follow it by the book. So, if it's an issue also about, you know, I'm hearing some people say about, you know, where the food comes from, I have no problem telling you where it comes from and how I cook it. I have a bit of, let me go back to California. What they do there is, as long as you are by the Health Department, if you have your, your, the fire marshals come in and do all of the sudden they need to you, you bump. It's called bumping. And that's kind of what I think a lot of us are seeing that we want to be able to do here, is that it does, you, the trucks hold it, hold their own. What you do is you stay there, you cannot stay there any longer than, now, it probably has changed. But I moved in 2003, and you were able to stay in that spot for two hours. As long as you had all your codes, you had everything where it needed to be, you bumped. You stayed there, you cooked for the people and who needed lunches, and you just moved. And so I kind of have a thing about every time that we would like to move, there would be a fee for us, because that, we are mobile. That is what we do. We do not want to be brick and mortar. Now, do I want to go there? Absolutely. But I also want to be true to the mobile vending, because that is a culture. It is something that we bring forth to the community. Not only are we, you know, we are getting to the point where we need to start hiring. Why? Because it's getting to the point where we need, you know, I mean, we're, we're bringing money, you know, in revenue. And so, it's, it's not just about us. It's about helping these kids get a job, you know, relationships, cooking darn good food. And I just, I guess I have, that's kind of where my issue is, about having to pay every time we choose to go somewhere. Now, I have not, I've been following as much as I can, did not make it to the last meeting, so I'm kind of hearing rumors, even though I'm still reading up on everything, so I'm a little unclear. But as far as in relation to, I'm sorry, I lost my thought. I guess what I'm saying, I just, I, you know, I totally forgot where I was going with everything.
I was there tonight earlier, if you noticed.
Well, let me just say, I, I just know that I think it really is important that we have, oh, and we talk about competition. We're talking, you know, why don't we make this healthy competition? Why doesn't someone step up and say, instead of, you know, saying, well, what can we do to advance what we're doing, instead of trying to do this competition and bring us down and say, I don't want you next to my brick and mortar. I don't want you here. Well, why not? If you, I mean, why don't you step up something then and make something better on your menu? I mean, the food speaks for itself. I'm not, I just put, I, you know, I make the food, I go where I need to go. Now, we are at a, at a location that is, of course, permanent. And let me go back. I'm sorry I'm moving around, but I just remembered what I was trying to say. Now, I'm having a hard time understanding the difference between a mobile truck and a trailer that a truck pulls. Now, that's what we have. We have the kind that the truck has to pull. It's still mobile. It's bigger, but I should still have that same opportunity to hop wherever or jump wherever I want. I can just, I mean, it, it might be a little more difficult space-wise. We're talking about the same. So, I question that as well. As far as, like I said, about the health, the competition, if people knew on the other side, and I'm sure some of them do, but I don't think they would be saying this, it, Clayton and I are school teachers. This is our retirement. We put every cent into this thing and, and know that we have, we have it. And our customers are telling us that. And so, for someone to say, you know, we have an advantage over brick and mortar, that's so, so wrong. If you were living my life and you're sitting in my house and doing those bills and trying to figure out, I'm in debt, we're in debt for another five years. So, to say that there's an advantage, I mean, that, that, thousands and thousands of dollars that are put into there, because that is something that our heart is, we're putting our heart and soul. That is just something we love to do. And so for people to just say that we have a disadvantage, well, then you go get your own truck. And you, and you know, you do what we're doing. And then let's see who has the disadvantage. But, you know, we do, we love, I mean, we would love to go brick and mortar. Absolutely. But financially, as people who are starting out a new business, this is how we grow. This is how you make a part of what's going on in your community up and coming. And Fayetteville is an awesome place. Coming from California and, and being born and raised and seeing everything, and seeing how this community is coming together and trying to bring so many things to the forefront is awesome. And I see it growing, but I think before all these things are made, and I wish we had more people step up, because I taught, I mean, people that come up to our truck are constantly for us, constantly for the food trucks. But then I come to these meetings, and I'm like, well, where are you? Because without them, how are we gonna make change? You all are gonna make that change. There's only a few of us, but I think you need to understand it. It isn't easy. It isn't easy, and we're trying to make a living. I am not, I'm a teacher, special education teacher. I fell lost last October, had to have surgery. I'm now told that I won't be able to go back to that job. That's my life. And it came at the right time with this truck. So it's an opportunity to have a career, you know, in, in what I love to do, to cook, to be around people, and do what I need to do for that. Interesting enough, it's the catering. I think that, too, is a great question, because we are coming into that as well. So sorry to bore you with what I had to say. You had to walk out. But...
I think, I think he hit me to take a burger.
I understand that. But that is also, yes. Okay, so, but as I was saying, as far as the catering, I think that's something very good to address, because it is something that comes to us, and we, we have done it in our truck. We have, the Fiedels, if I'd like to just say about them, they have been outstanding. They have been keeping us in business, because they have said, we, we love your chicken. I want you to do Dad's Day. I want you to do all these things. And, and if we have the room and the capability in there, we just fried a thousand pieces of chicken. And so, it can be done, and that is how, that is how, that's how we make our money. And when you talk about, what about keeping it to health code? You know, how are you guys, you know, making sure you're maintaining, you know, getting this chicken? I think he was saying how he wanted to be able to move the truck so that he could cater, you know, if you have a business calling and saying, I would like you to put your truck right here and cater. You, we, what we do is we can, we, we take the food to them. We do it in our truck, and we have a warmer, and it, by Health Department code, it has to stay at a certain temperature. So, when we're talking about all this catering, keep in mind, it is a Health Department thing as well. So, it isn't something you just jump into and go, yeah, we're gonna fling out some food over there. It's about maintaining your temperature and keeping that food at a certain, you know, you have to keep, I mean, it, it's just, I have a passion for this, I guess I should say. And I'm getting, I'm going all over, and I'm so sorry. Like I said, Clayton's the one to talk, but I do have great concerns, though, about, it's gonna be costly if we have to bump and pay every single time. And like, I mean, I don't understand or see why it is I can't take my mobile truck if I am following all the Health Department codes, so you know that I'm safe, my food is good, and it is, you know, everything is okay. So I don't under, I just can't seem to understand that. So my two things are, why am I so different if I'm a, a, a trailer or a truck? So that, just someone needs to explain that to me. And why, why we just can't bump? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else would like to address us on this? Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the council. Yes?
Well, the concerns we've heard tonight are things that we've discussed internally in developing this. And I don't, I say that because if the council wants to address that, we're already halfway there. We've had, we have the alternative frameworks. We can discuss those as a council. And to give you context, why this ordinance is the way it is before you, I don't think any of us anticipated we were going to get the strong majority of support that we got at the Planning Commission for this. Based on the comments that had happened, other times this has been brought up, and in the paper, we were expecting much more opposition and questions about the expansion of this, of this new industry. But we didn't see that at the Planning Commission. The seven who voted for this were enthusiastic about it and wanted it to go farther. And I think if you go back and read the minutes or watch the tape, you would come to the same conclusion. So, I say all this just to say, if we want to pass this as it is, or if we want to take another two weeks and then pass it then, or not pass it, you know, we can do that. But if we want to take a little more time and address these concerns that we've heard tonight, which I think are very legitimate, we can do that, too. We're ready to do that. We have the frameworks ready to go, so the discussion will be efficient.
Well, you know, here's what I'm saying. I know that Sarah had mentioned going to ordinance review. I mean, this is on the first reading, and I don't know how a chair of the ordinance review committee would, I mean...
I'm fine with it going to ordinance review. I'm just, you know, is there, is there...
Well, I mean, I guess my question is, we've got a two-week, if you left it on the first reading, you have two weeks to go to ordinance review, or whatever y'all want to do. I'm just saying, that's what we got.
Well, there is an ordinance review committee meeting scheduled tomorrow, but it's on a single subject, and it's only gonna take up the whole time.
Yeah.
I believe that we would need a meeting at ordinance review dedicated to this.
I do, too.
The concerns that have been brought up, while I say that we're ready to discuss, and we have those alternative frameworks, there are many different concerns, and the discussion, there's more than one alternative to address each of them. So the discussion could be relatively complex. I think it would require its own meeting.
So, what's the, what's the council thinking here? Do you want to, you just want to leave it on the first reading and come back with two weeks? Do you want to, I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for what y'all want to do.
Well, what I would do procedurally is move that we table this indefinitely and send it to ordinance review committee, and at the conclusion of that meeting, put it back on the agenda.
So whenever they get done with this, then they can move on to, I mean, the height regulations tomorrow night, then they can set up a time in a couple, three weeks to do another one?
I was gonna say, if we're gonna take this to ordinance review, we're probably gonna be out in December.
That's right.
Probably later December. So if you're comfortable with that, then we can do that. But it will be later December before I can schedule an ordinance review.
I understand. So, what's y'all's thoughts on that?
I mean, I'll maintain my motion. I think that's perfectly reasonable. The concerns, I think, we've heard tonight are legitimate enough that we should, if the council desires, take the time to address them.
So you want to, to table until it goes to ordinance review, basically?
That's right.
Which will be in December?
Yes, at some point.
At some point. Is anybody good with that? Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All right.
Mayor, council, anything that is tabled indefinitely at the end of the year goes away completely and cannot be brought back. So you might want to table it date-specific, even if you table it to sometime in January, or just remember that we won't be bringing it back if it's tabled indefinitely at the end of the year.
You could, if you wanted to, choose one of the meetings in December to table, too, and then even if you're ready with it before that, you could remove it from the table by a vote of the city council.
Well, don't we do something like the second meeting in December? We'll let it work for everybody. That would put, what's the first meeting in December? Does anybody got it?
First meeting in December is December the 3rd, I believe, Mayor.
And then the 10th would be the second.
And then the 17th, 17th would be the next meeting.
That's fine. I'm in my motion.
To go to the 17th of December.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. We have a motion, a second to table this item until the second meeting of December, city council meeting in December, which is the 17th?
December 17th, yes, yes, sir.
All right. And between now and then, I'm sure we'll have an ordinance review meeting of some sort. All right. Everybody good? Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tena?
Yes.
Shop Mart?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed. Now you're back to number six, the new Fayetteville planning area. I see that the map is now just laid over.
Yes, we have a map now. Now, we were in the, at, hearing from the public, do I need to start all over again, or can we just start from?
No, you start where you left off.
All right. Okay, I'll be, there's your map.
Thank you.
Would you like to comment on it?
No, as I said, I haven't studied very much, but it's, it's great that you guys brought it back, because I hope the camera's on it and...
Oh, I'm sure camera's on it.
And that's, that's the important thing, in case the public has any input that hasn't been given, because I suspect there's very little. And most of us trust the staff and the council make good decisions, but it's every citizen's duty, I think, to try to know what's going on. And the more widely available the meetings or broadcasts, and the more detail that's included in them, the better we can do that. I personally don't see any problem, because I'm not totally aware of every detail of the previous. But there could be somebody that sees something's changed in his little part of town and want to comment it, and comment on it, at least to have a chance with the ability to see this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Okay, so now I'll bring it back to the council.
Move we pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the new Fayetteville planning area resolution. Any final comments on it? Okay. Sondra, would you please call the robe?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tena?
Yes.
Shop Mart?
Yes.
Adams?
Okay. All right. This moves us to number eight, Huntsville Road City Property Resolution to amend the 2030 future land use map to change the city-owned parcel of the former Tyson's Plan on Huntsville Road to the Civic Institutional to City Neighborhood, and to express the city council's support to request proposal for sale and development of the remaining acreage. Okay, Peter? Okay, Peter?
Mayor, council, um, good evening again. You probably recall, um, this property, uh, has been a topic of many discussions in front of this, this council and other councils. Um, has an interesting history dating back to the six, 1960s when it, uh, was first developed as a shopping center at the intersection of Huntsville and Happy Hollow Road. Um, later, uh, in the 80s, the Tyson Foods Company bought it and turned it into a tortilla factory. Uh, that factory closed in the early 2000s. Um, in 2005, the city of Fayetteville acquired the 11.5 acre property, um, for 1.1 million. Part of that property was split off to build fire station number three. Uh, another part of it was split off to allow for the widening of Huntsville and Happy Hollow Road. And then, earlier this year, you all approved the sale of approximately two acres of the property to, uh, Come and Go Convenience Stores for 1.115 million. Um, at that time, council requested that staff come up with some, uh, proposal and plans for what to do with the remaining, um, 5.8 acres of property. Uh, since that time, we, uh, developed three illustrative plans for the property, which are in your packet. Um, we presented those plans to the public at an input session at Ha- Happy Hollow Elementary School, um, in August, and we got over 200 survey responses from the public, uh, which overwhelmingly felt like the three plans that we proposed, um, were headed in the right direction. Eighty-two percent of respondents felt like those were headed in the right direction. Um, those plans included different variations on, um, mixed use, uh, with predominantly commercial, uh, towards the northwest of the property, near the intersection of Happy Hollow and Huntsville, and predominantly residential uses further to the south and east, away from that busy intersection. Um, the, uh, the resolution before you does two things. It, um, it changes the land use designation, future land use designation for the property. Currently, the property is designated as Civic Institutional, that's because it's city-owned property. That's, uh, typically what we designate our own, our own parcels. Um, the proposal is to change that future land use designation to City Neighborhood. Um, City Neighborhood, uh, future land use designations, uh, abut this property to the north, south, and west. Um, and City Neighborhood would, would support, um, commercial uses and transitional, uh, residential uses that would provide a buffer between the more, um, the, uh, the single-family uses further to the south, um, or predominantly to the east of the site. Um, the second thing that this resolution would do is it would direct staff to begin a, um, development of a request for proposals process for the property. Um, that proposal process would ask interested parties or developers to propose, um, development, uh, present development, uh, plans, including a, uh, purchase price for the property, um, along with proposals for zoning, um, and, uh, potentially inclusion of attainable housing, mixing of uses, green space and gardens, um, and the development form could all be considerations as part of that, um, that, that selection process for that, um, request for proposals process. Um, this is not unlike what many other communities have done across the country for, uh, parcels that they, uh, own and are trying to sell, but want to have some, retain some control over the, how those propos, those parcels develop as part of that sale. Um, so, the, uh, the, the, um, public input that we got during the, the input session, uh, as well as the survey responses would help guide that, that selection process in terms of selecting that, um, that developer for that, um, proposal of the property.
Okay, what questions do we have, Peter?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one correction.
Sure.
Uh, this resolution does not direct staff to do anything. The mayor directs staff, the city council, and this one is expressing its support to request proposals for the sale and development of the remaining acreage. So, that's what the resolution says. Obviously, I think that the mayor will then, uh, use his staff to, uh, look at the sale of this property as you have requested, uh, through your intent that he do. But I, uh, this comes up occasionally where we have, uh, staff sometimes saying that they are being directed by you, but that is not correct. They work for the mayor and he is the chief executive officer, so you do not get your directions from the city council.
Thank you, Kit, my mistake.
Okay. So, how should it be changed on this then?
The, the resolution, I drafted the resolution and it is correct.
Okay.
It was, it was my mistake in characterizing the-
Okay.
-the resolution.
All right. All right, so, what questions do we have for Peter? Yes, sir.
First of all, I just wanna say thank you to the staff for all of their work on this proposal, uh, and especially engaging with the citizens, uh, and getting their feedback. I did, I noticed that on page 10 of our packet, uh, the three top priorities based on design elements and ideas, two of the highest ranked ones, uh, by citizens were neighborhood gardens and public space, green space, park. Uh, what are we doing to ensure that those will be included in any development proposals?
Um, I think the, that could definitely be written into part of the criteria as part of that, um, proposal process and likely would be written into that, uh, criteria, that that be included as, uh, part of the proposal.
Does staff have a recommendation on the percentage of the site that would be allocated for those uses?
Um, I don't think we've looked at it in that, at that level of detail, so at this point, no, I don't think we have a, a percentage requirement. But the idea, the, the concepts that we showed, presented, um, using this, those, those public spaces as, uh, neighborhood or communal garden spaces. So, we would look at, you know, some allotment that would, um, be appropriate for the, um, the amount of housing or the number of residents that would be using that, that space for, for that type of use.
I would like to see us, uh, attach some sort of guidelines, uh, to our request for proposal, uh, to develop this property, just to ensure that we are meeting that citizen request.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion? Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the motion?
Uh, to, uh, request that staff, uh, provide some guidance, uh, as part of the request for proposals, uh, in terms of a percentage, uh, of community garden or park space that would be allocated based on the use of the property.
You mean to include a specific number?
Yes, or proportionality.
Uh, I'll second that if, if you mean a lower bound.
Yes, yeah, a minimum.
Okay, a minimum. Have you got that, Kit?
Uh, I do not. I guess you're proposing a new section three.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I'm quite following what y'all want. What do you wanna do?
Okay. Uh, I want staff to, as part of their request for proposal, set a minimum amount of either community garden or green space, park space.
Do you have the minimum amount that you want to put in there?
No, I would like staff to recommend that based on, uh, their expertise.
Are they recommending that too?
Uh, as, to include that as part, part of the request for proposals that we send out for development.
So, you're asking that a minimum amount of green space to be determined by the staff?
Yes.
Hang on.
Mayor, and I think to say, based on the input from the citizenry.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, we can, we can provide this chart which shows them that.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, I just don't want it to be leftover space allocated as green space. We want to actually meet the neighbors' request for gardens or park space.
Okay, well, my question is, we had public input sessions and Peter, what did you garner from the public input sessions? Did, is there a certain amount of green space or?
Uh, mayor, all three options that we drew up showed, um, showed garden and green space in them. I don't-
That's what I remember.
Yeah, I can't tell you the exact, um, amount of acreage for each of those, but Sarah is correct that there was definitely, the, the public reaction to those illustrations was, uh, very positive and, and supportive of inclusion of, um, garden or green space.
That's what I remember in the three proposals that we had, there was garden and green space, but-
Well, we are required by our contract with Come and Go to have that half acre, uh, space right by the intersection to, that will be green space.
Well, uh, you know, if you, if you look at these top priorities as outlined by our citizens, you know, they're asking for neighborhood gardens was the number one request. So, that's not leftover space at a busy intersection.
So, you wanna have neighborhood gardens rather than the green space?
Well, yeah, neighborhood gardens, public space, green space, and park areas. Those were the top two requests, as you can see on page 10 of our packet. And so, um, I don't know if there is, uh, there are some guidelines for a percentage of community garden space per resident that we could look at, but I'm sure that someone has established some standards that we could use to say, you know, for whatever type of development you have. If you have X residential units, you need Y amount of green space or garden space. So, I, I'm asking the staff to determine what that recommended ratio is and to include that as a requirement in the request for proposals.
Okay, I guess the point being that, but you do have green space or gardens in the proposals.
We have not even drafted the request for proposal yet, mayor. But upon direction from you, uh, and with guidance from the council, we will begin that, that process soon and definitely our plan was to include the, um, the allotment that, that Sarah is alluding to.
Yeah, we were, had talked about that before. I don't know exactly-
Mayor, a, a point I just wanna make sure we're clear about as we set this, is it needs to be really specific to the properties in which someone is making a proposal for, because we're making an assumption that the proposal offer is gonna be for all the property. And there may be someone who only makes a proposal for part of the property.
Like a two acres.
And so, you want the flexibility, I believe, in, in that design to be able to, you might piece together two separate proposals because you think it ultimately ends up being the best development proposal as opposed to a single property development option, or it could be the exact reverse. And so, I just think that if, if I understand what we're being directed by this council amendment is that staff would make a determination of a green space-
Some size.
-uh, option subsets to be used for either portions of the property or all of the property developed into those categories outlined, um, in community gardens, public green spaces, and I can't remember the third one.
I, I think, I think what you're saying basically is there's a certain proportion of green space you wanna see left in this seven acres, correct? Is that fair?
Right, it, yeah, and I wanna clarify, that's not, not just green space. I'm not looking at turf grass.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, but some sort of usable green space.
Yes, some ecological services provided by this site. And that, uh, it's in the request for proposals, either they can include it in the proposal if they wanna design something for the whole site, or we can request that they pay into a fund that then could offset the development cost of another portion of the site. But that we wanna make sure that we are including the citizens' desire for these spaces, that we're making sure that that's included in this development.
So, this will be an amendment to this resolution?
This would be a new section three.
All right, Kit, would you read that for me, please?
Well, let me, I'll, I'll try to read it and, uh, Alderman, Marsh, you let me know if you need to change it. That the city council, city Fayetteville Arcs, I hereby expresses its support to set a minimum amount of green space for neighborhood gardens and what else were you saying?
Um, neighborhood gardens and park space.
And park space.
Or, or it could be low-impact development space, something that is providing ecological services. Maybe Jeremy or Peter, do you have an idea of a better phrase?
Okay, so, I'm gonna add park space to be included in the development of, and you wanted this for the remaining lot or just the southern lot below the road and avoid the one and a half acre commercial lot?
No, it, as a proportion of the site that, if you guys help, somewhere.
I got you.
Somewhere on the site, we need to have an appropriate amount of-
X amount of what, square footage or whatever.
Yes, so, you know, if they're developing it in a dense pattern, then we'll probably need a little bit more. Whereas if it's a few single-family residences, we could get away with less. So, there are guidelines that determine how much is, or that recommend an amount of green space or community garden space per residential unit, uh, and I think that we need to consult those.
Okay, well, without knowing what that space is.
So, it would, it would say that the city council expresses its support to set a minimum amount of green space, uh, for neighborhood gardens and park space to be included in the development of the site.
Perfect, thank you.
Of some sort of footage.
Yeah, if we set the minimum amount and that could be a, that could be a land area, that could be a percentage.
Okay, all right, that's the-
I, I trust our staff to just sort that out.
That is the amendment. Everybody good with that or do, everybody good? Do we have any comment on the amendment? Let's stay with the amendment, please.
Let us stay long enough for this. Um, the, Aubrey Shepherd again, the land in question, I'm uncertain. Again, we didn't have a map on it. I'm not gonna ask you to do it again, bring up another one this late, but, um, the, the exact dimensions of the site and, and the exact-
We have three of them.
-portions of it, it makes a lot of difference. If we require green space out by the street, uh, in front of Come and Go, then it's gonna be basically fake green space. In other words, everything built in the city seems to have, uh, a bunch of gravel put in, or worse, and then they put some topsoil that's shallow. That will serve the purpose of raising some, even some native plants, but it will not allow, uh, the, the important, beautiful, uh, native, uh, perennials to put their roots deeply and that sort of thing.
Aubrey, I think-
And it will not allow water to soak in. So, moving from the front, what I was talking about there, it's pretty difficult to, to create that green space out in that corner. But in the back, in the southeast portion, which is, I think is mostly what we're talking about, that'll be for sale to other developers, there may still be some areas where the native soil exists. And the effort should be in those places where you can grow food, you can have native plants, you can have water absorbed, of course, 'cause that's right where all these little streamlets come together, go straight to the West Fork, and it's a heck of a flood down there when it comes. So, it's much cheaper to protect the soil where it is than to try to bring in soil. Haul it out, move it back in. So, yes, I'm for the amendment.
Well, I, I think what I'm trying to say is, I think the motion was usable green space, not just a bunch of subsoil throwed down on the ground with grass on top of it, if I understand that correctly.
Yeah, not leftover space, not a bunch of turf grass.
Usable green space.
And ecologically useful to the city's-
Yes, that's what I understand this amendment is.
...to protect the watershed.
It would provide ecological services.
Okay.
Thank you. So, I'm correct about it would be the, the southeast, uh-
Yes.
-corner in question primarily.
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to address this on the amendment? Okay. What comments and questions and discussion do we have on the amendment, council?
Let me just say one thing.
Okay.
Um, while explaining this may have been a con, a little bit confusing, I think it's, it's pretty simple to me. It's always a good idea when you're sending out a request for proposals to include parameters to guide the respondents, um, and this being at the top of the citizens' list, I think it makes perfect sense to include it.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Okay, if we don't have any more comments or questions on the amendment, Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Long?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Tenet?
Yes.
Shopmar?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Okey-dokey. All right, now we have the resolution as a whole. What, uh, comments or questions do we have on the amended resolution from the council? Anything?
Move, we pass it.
Second.
Okay, let me take some public comment. Oh, everyone's gone. Um, Mr.-
[laughing]
Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, bringing it right on back to the council. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to propose one more amendment, and that is also in our, uh, request for
I would like to propose one more amendment, and that is also in our request for proposal with the parameters that we include that they follow our low-impact design guidelines.
I'll second that.
Okay, now we have an amendment to develop it according to low-impact development design, correct?
Yes, I mean, this is.
I think I got that.
Adjacent to our White River access point, and there's a lot of drainage in this area that needs to be dealt with appropriately.
Okay. What questions do we have?
I'll say something.
Sure.
You know, I think it's 2009 or maybe 2010 that we passed an ordinance to create a new set of drainage guidelines and establish best practices manual for low-impact development. And, you know, we were really surprised whenever that passed so quickly and with so much support because we were expecting a lot of controversy. But to former alderwoman Sarah Lewis's credit, you know, she came from the industry where she advised developers on low-impact development. And so, we already had a good basis of understanding the community of what LID meant exactly. And it's not controversial at all when you go talk to developers now. It seems like it's only ever controversial with some elected officials across the country. But when you actually take a look at the data, developers love it and cities love it for two reasons. On average, it saves forty percent on construction costs and it saves on maintenance costs year over year. So, I support this, not just because it's a good idea, it's also completely non-threatening.
Okay.
I'd like to add.
Yes.
Having just been on a lot of the mobile tours in Seattle for the National League of Cities Conference, you can see these low-impact development green streets, all in their South Lake Union neighborhood. That's where Google is, where Amazon is, they're in front of the Whole Foods, and they're beautiful. And they've done a lot to attract new businesses and green industries into that neighborhood. So, I think that in order to attract the best developments and hopefully some green jobs, that this could help us do that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Now, this amendment is to develop the area according to low-impact development standards. Fair enough?
Actually, to require a developer to follow our low-impact design standard.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on that? Speak now or we're going to vote. Yes.
So, we can, we can do that. We can require a developer to use low-impact development.
Yeah, the low-impact design standards were obviously done as an option. We were trying to encourage developers to do it voluntarily, and there were certain advantages for them, not terrific, but some advantages for them if they in fact decided to do that. We could not require that at that, at this point in time. However, this is our property. Now, it might lower the money that we're going to get for this property. Every time you put another restriction on the property you're trying to sell, you basically are reducing its value to a developer who would rather be able to buy a property with no restrictions. It doesn't mean you shouldn't put any restrictions on it, but you do need to keep in mind that the more restrictions that you place upon this, the fewer people are going to be interested in developing a commercial site and the less they're probably going to be willing to pay for it. It's just a trade-off that you all can make.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Jessica.
And I certainly am not against low-impact, or I'm not against any of this, but I am a little bit worried about immediately putting so many restrictions on this property because it is the public's property, it's not, and I'm worried about potential developers and investors even looking at this and moving forward with this because of the restrictions, where we might have somebody out there who would come and look at it if we don't have a tremendous amount of restrictions on it, and then we work with them and decide if they are right for the property at that point, rather than say, you can't even come into town and look at this piece of property until you meet all these requirements. I'm just afraid that we're, we're limiting the pool or draining the pool of all the water before we even, before we even know who's going to come and look at it. And again, we need to sell this land for the most money, and I understand the taxpayers deserve that, but at the same time, we've proven that we make decisions based not just on money. When we were looking at Casey's and Come and Go, we made a decision based on a lot of different factors, not just money. So, I would almost rather have that discussion later than, I'm just worried that if we put too many restrictions on the beginning, that we're going to limit the amount of people that even come and look at it. But again.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead.
I understand that concern, but I don't think there's cause for that and that concern in this case, if only because every developer out there now understands LID design, and they understand the cost savings associated with it. And in most cities, it's still illegal, and that's what keeps them from going there. It certainly won't prevent anybody, in my opinion, in my experience from the conversations I've had, prevent anybody from applying, especially consider that if we develop an RFP for this, it's going to be advertised nationally, it's going to go out to dozens and dozens and dozens of firms that are going to see this thing. So, there's quite a broad pool that are going to be invited to apply, and everyone in the industry now understands LID and the cost savings.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
My question is, are we just putting an extra restriction on ourselves? I mean, usually I would be all for the low-impact development thing, but we're going to have to talk about who we sell the land to when it comes to us. I mean, I guess I just, I question whether that's smart to do on the front side.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question, if you would allow me to ask Jeremy if he's aware of the number or percentage of low-impact developments that have occurred in Fayetteville since we've enacted the ordinance?
I don't, honestly. I mean, I know that there's.
Is it a large percentage? Have we seen a lot of low-impact development?
We've seen a lot of developments utilize portions of it. Whether the entire project has come through, that's probably a much lower percentage, but it's certainly been something that we've, we've seen some developments utilize a portion of. I know that the drainage criteria manual that we're working on right now incorporates low-impact development as part of the actual drainage criteria manual, and so it's much more built into the overall system, and that will be coming forward at the beginning of next year. It's just one of the design parameters that we allow, so it's certainly something that we've seen utilized. To what extent, I can really put a number to it, though.
All right. Della, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I do. I'm just weighing it, and I, I think we've heard some good arguments.
Okay.
If we can, you know, do the negotiation on the other end, that'd be great. Is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
Oh, well, that's certainly what we did with Come and Go. We went, entered into an extensive negotiation once they showed some interest. Once they were a fish on the line, then we started reeling them in, not only money-wise, which was substantially more than what they originally offered, but also agreeing to cost share of the interior roads and to have an area for green space in the front, that half acre that's up there in the front. So, yes, there, and then, of course, when they came to the council and in order to try to win you over, they were saying, well, we'll build the lead standards. So, the negotiations can continue right up until you make a final decision one way or another whether to, to sell them the property.
You know, I feel like that probably is the best, the better decision for us at this point in time.
Okay, all right. Yes.
I would like to just remind everyone that this is right next to the White River. And that's, has a huge issue with sedimentation, and so having these ecological services that the low-impact development provides, provides a direct benefit to our community, but sensing the hesitation on the council, I'd like to amend the resolution to just request LID proposals specifically rather than require it.
Like we did with Come and Go. Sure.
I'll second the amendment.
Okay. Now, where does that put us now, Kit?
So, it would now read that the city council, City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby expresses its support to request a developer to follow our low-impact design standards. Is that what, is that what your motion is?
Yes.
Without it being really mandatory, they would bring it to the council and we would negotiate that process, correct?
Yes.
Everybody good? Okey-dokey. Any comments on that? All right. Well, I see no one from the public, so.
We're back to number four now, section, section four, which is the latest amendment.
Well, this is the latest amendment. All right. Has everybody got the amendment? All right. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam, yes.
Okay. Now, we have the amended, amended resolution.
And I didn't tell you, but I've been changing the title a little bit to try to include your amendments.
I thought you might have another amendment.
No, no.
All right. Now.
I move we pass the amended resolution.
We already have a motion and a second on the floor to pass the resolution.
All right. Okay, everybody good? All right. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Well done, that was some good horse trading there. All right. All right, number, number nine, zipping right along. Instrument and, do y'all want a break or you want to just keep right on?
We've got two left, let's keep going.
Okay, just asking, just asking. Number nine. Since I had that little middle lapse while it go, this is all new to me anyway. All right, number, number nine, instrument and supply incorporated. An ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with instrument and supply incorporated for the purchase of HAWC Channel Monster, now who could be against that? In a total amount of $192,342.36 and approving a budget adjustment. Kit?
Whereas a hamstring sewer pump station has a Channel Monster inline screening and grinding unit, which protects it and the West Side wastewater treatment plant from large foreign objects entering the pump station. And whereas a failure of the Channel Monster could lead to a catastrophic failure in damage amount exceeding a half million dollars to the hamstring sewer pump station, plus it could create a significant danger of sewer overflow. Whereas instrument supply incorporated is the sole source provider in Arkansas for the Channel Monster. And whereas a backup Channel Monster will lower the risk of future downstream equipment damage and unnecessary risk to the city staff. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas, section one, that the city council, the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby determines an exceptional situation exists in which competitive bidding is deemed not feasible or practical and therefore weighs requirements of formal competitive bidding and approves an agreement with instrument and supply incorporated in the amount of $192,342.36 for the purchase of a JWC Channel Monster. Section two, that the city council of the City of Fayetteville, Arkansas hereby approves a budget adjustment which is attached to exhibit eight.
All right.
David Juergens, utility director. What Kit said.
What else can be said?
Why don't you explain to the public, though, a little bit about, you know, what this does and why?
This Channel Monster is, is a grinder, and we have a forty-eight inch sewer line and a twenty-four inch sewer line that come together and then come into a concrete channel that's very large, actually, and essentially an underground room. And all of the water that goes into this pump station, which is about ninety percent of the water that goes to the West Side wastewater treatment plant, passes through this grinder. And it's, it's just, it's got rotating teeth that are about six feet tall that just grind anything that comes into it. A bowling ball causes a problem, a concrete block, no problem whatsoever. Two-by-fours, chickens, bowling balls, pieces of bicycles, couch cushions, some of those other things that we've seen in sewer lines go right through the sucker and it just get ground up and pulverized into very small pieces. The result of that is that the seven pumps we have in the hamstring lift station can pass this broken-up debris, because it's very small, very, very easily. Also, this debris is small enough that it doesn't create problems and get wound up in the wastewater plant itself and then cause much higher maintenance costs further downstream in the, in the, both the pump station and in the wastewater plant. It's a very efficient machine. When it breaks, it takes a very long time to get it maintained, and we are very nervous because we have a lot of really high-value assets that are vulnerable when this thing is not in operation, which is why we're requesting the funding to purchase a spare. So, we pull it out, we put another one right back in. We did evaluate alternatives, but none of them fit in the channel because it has to be tailor-made for the unit that goes in it, and it would have frankly cost a whole lot more if we had have put in another unit of a different manufacturer in, because it would have gone in a side-stream channel parallel to this one, and the cost would have been three times the cost of just putting, buying this one under a bid waiver.
Okay. Now you know. And the public knows. Any public comment on this? No? All right.
Move, we spin a little bit, go to the second reading.
We have a motion and a second, we go to the second reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam, yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with instrument and supply incorporated for the purchase of a JWC Channel Monster in the total amount of $192,342.36 and approving a budget adjustment.
I move we go to the third and final reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we go to the third and final reading. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
And ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and approving an agreement with instrument and supply incorporated for the purchase of a JWC Channel Monster in the total amount of $192,342.36 and approving a budget adjustment.
David, you said that these were hard to fix. Does someone have to have, do they have to go to a Channel Monster repair school or?
I've heard it referred to as Monsters, Inc., but.
Okay, we've done enough tonight.
Let's not violate anybody's copyright.
Oh, no. I got a little lax there, I'm going to pay back. All right. Any final comments on the Channel Monster? All right. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
All right. Number ten, CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated Amendment Number Four. Resolution approving contract amendment number four with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated in amount of $7,441,428 for operation, maintenance, management and engineering services for the city wastewater treatment facilities and systems in 2014, subject to approval of the 2014 annual city budget and work program in approving a $70,000 contract contingency. Dick.
David Juergens, utility director, once again. This is our annual contract for wastewater treatment operations, pump station operations and the other items listed in the memo that were named out. CH2M Hill has been operating our wastewater facilities now for twenty-five years, since 1987, and do frankly an exceptional job of it. We are a shining example of an excellent public partnership in this regard. They give us capabilities that frankly city staff can't give by themselves. And by the same token, they operate our facilities incredibly well, and when you go out and look at either of the plants, frankly, you'll be very impressed. The west plant is five years old, the northern plant actually has been in place since the late 1960s, and they look excellent, they're operated very, very well. This is the contract amendment number four, based off the last request for qualifications that we did in 2009 for operations for next year. This contract is an increase of $216,000 approximately for next year's operations due primarily to up-and-coming permitting issues that are, that are still continuing to evolve, some increased costs due to the odor control that we experienced at the biosolids drying facility, which in all of the biosolids drying facilities that we visited when we were doing our design and our initial evaluation, frankly, didn't have these odor issues that we have. And also in some increase in personnel costs, very similar to what the city has experienced this last year, where they did have some pay increases because of market adjustment. The $70,000 contingency is so that if there are any small out-of-scope items that come forward, we can approve those at mayor level without having to take the time of having it come forward to the full city council, because sometimes when you have those, it may be an operational issue that we have at the wastewater facility that we need to get moving on very, very quickly. I think that sums up the contract amendments before you. I think that sums up the contract amendments before you. Next year, we will hit five years for this contract, and then we will evaluate whether to continue with the contract. The way these contracts are set up, they are for five-year periods, but can be extended for two additional five-year periods for a total of 15 years. So, sometime in mid to late next year, we'll be coming forward with an evaluation of whether we should continue with CH2M Hill or go out with a request for proposals for competitive proposals.
I will say CH2M Hill does an excellent job. I'm very pleased with the work from an administration perspective. I think they have done excellent jobs in the operation and maintenance and management of those wastewater treatment services, and I certainly want to thank them for the work that they've done. Okay, having said that, what comments do we have from the council? Mr. Mayor? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, pass the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. Any final comments from the council?
Just like to note, this did go through the Water Sewer Committee, and it was endorsed unanimously.
Thank you, sir. All right. Sandra, would you please call the roll?
Wong.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Marsh.
Yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Tennant.
Yes.
Shopmar.
Yes.
Adam.
Yes.
Okay. What announcements do we have?
There'll be a Ward one meeting tomorrow, Thursday evening, at the Senior Center on South College, 6:00.
This Thursday?
Yes, the 21st.
Okay. Yes, what else do we have?
This coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the Fayetteville Forward Creative Economy Action Group will be getting together to build a float for our Lights of the Ozarks Parade. Our theme is superheroes, and you're supposed to harness your superpower to move Fayetteville forward. We'll have all the supplies and tools you need, anyone and everyone is welcome to show up at the St. Paul's parking lot at 10:00 a.m. and help build a float and maybe make a costume.
Okay.
Mayor, a couple of announcements for tonight. One, I want to remind the council that tomorrow, Wednesday, the 20th, at 5:15 p.m. in Room 326, is the Ordinance Review Committee meeting to specifically discuss the building heights proposal that's before the council. Thursday, November the 21st, the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission is having a transit alternatives analysis meeting for public input to discuss the options on regional public transit. It will be here in City Hall, Room 326, and it's an open forum between 4:00 and 7:00 p.m. for people to come in and provide their comments. Saturday, November the 23rd, that's this Saturday, right here in the downtown square, Block Street or Dixon Street, at 6:00 p.m. will be the Lights of the Ozarks Lighting and Parade. The parade route will be from Mountain Street to the square, around the square to Block Street, and we'll go north on Block Street, so Block Street will be closed during the time of the parade, and then go west on Dixon Street, turning on School Street. So, we hope you'll come out. Nice, long parade and a wide route for people to line the street so you don't have to all get to the square, you can see the parade in any of those locations. Also, remind the council and the citizens that city offices will be closed next Thursday, November 28th, and Friday, the 29th, for the Thanksgiving holiday. I want to bring attention to the fact that this holiday, Thursday, November the 28th, our Solid Waste Services do not operate on Thanksgiving Day, so citizens who have their services normally on that Thursday will be on Friday. And that's a bit different than how we operate many of the other holidays where we run on the holiday. But, for our city staff to be at home with their families on Thanksgiving, we changed those services to Friday, the 29th, so delayed one day. The office and the transfer station will not be open to the public at the Solid Waste Division on Thursday or Friday. So, when the city is closed to the public, the operations there are closed to the public, but we will be running trash service on that day. So, the public input session on transit, which I know is important to many people, your Ordinance Review Committee meeting tomorrow, and come out for Lights of the Ozarks Parade and lighting this weekend.
One final thing. On Monday, we'll be celebrating the completion of the Cato Springs Road Project.
Yes, we will.
What time is that?
2:30.
2:30.
At 2:30 on Cato Springs Road, adjacent to the Arkansas Research and Technology Park.
I'll be speaking a little bit about the history of that, so...
And then after that, we'll have a Ward four meeting.
Yes.
At 6:00, right here at City Hall.
Yes, Sandra.
Mayor, council, I'd like to remind you that we have several openings at that, 34 openings on the boards and committees. The application deadline is November the 22nd at 5:00 p.m.[1731.88]